Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. To those in person, to those who are watching us live streaming, and also for the first time, for those of you in person in Avalon on the island of Catalina, tonight we start, I don't know, simulcasting, that's an old-fashioned term, but I'm old-fashioned, so I think that's okay. But we are, we are also having our community from Avalon joining us, so that's going to allow us to have a public comment from Avalon in real time. And they don't have to come across the 26 miles, I guess, I think, 26 miles or so across the sea to attend one of our board meetings and possibly miss the boat back and have to pay for a hotel or something. So we welcome our Avalon family, and tonight's the first night, so we're rolling that out. And we know everything will go smoothly because a lot of work went into making sure this was possible. So now we will have our pledge, and I'm going to ask our student from Cabrillo, and tonight we have Frank Osborne Russell, so I'll invite him to come up and lead us in a pledge.
Can everyone please stand and put their right hand over their heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board discussed all matters listed. The board took reportable action on the following items. On item 3.1, the board voted 5-0 to approve public employee appointments. I will now turn it over to Ms. Takahashi, our Chief Business and Finance Officer, to provide specifics.
Sure, and I am very pleased to announce the appointment of David Miranda to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Operations. Congratulations, Mr. Miranda. And I will now hand it over to Dr. Sosa Valderama with initial announcements.
And for the Special Education Division, we have three provisional assignments. Kenneth Owens to Administrative Assistant, Acting Program Administrator, Administrative Assistant to Acting Program Administrator. Ms. Susan Caskey, also from Administrative Assistant to Acting Program Administrator. And Ms. Jessica McAfee, from Speech Pathologist to Acting Program Specialist, Speech Language Pathology. Thank you.
On item 3.2, the board discussed the matter but took no reportable action. On item 3.3, the board discussed the matter but took no reportable action. On item 3.4, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in case number 23 LBCV 00205 listed on the agenda. On item 3.5, the board discussed the matter but took no reportable action. On item 3.6, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in case number 22 LBCV 00367 listed on the agenda. On item 3.7, the board discussed the matter but took no reportable action. But in order for us to take reportable action going forward in this meeting, I need to have our Board Secretary do a roll call to establish a quorum.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Arroyo?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the adoption of said agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now we will formally introduce our student from Cabrillo, Frank Osborne Russell. So I'm going to invite you to the podium, and we look forward to hearing him.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Baker, board members, fellow Jags, and LBUSD guests. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Frank Osborne Russell, and it is such an honor to be here representing Cabrillo High School as the ASB president. I want to thank, I want to thank people who have come to support me today. I would like to take this time to acknowledge my family for all their hard, for their support and guidance for me to be, for their support and guidance to be the young man you see here today. I'm a little nervous, y'all. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself before going over to things happening at Cabrillo. I attended Cabrillo High School for four years and have been involved in many different aspects of the campus. I am in the Academy of Global Logistics, AGL Pathway. I am currently ASB president, Capital League president, and Keystone Vice President. I played on a soccer team for the last four years. Last year, I was awarded Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club 2024. Being involved in so many different aspects of the campus and the community has given me the opportunity to help facilitate the changes with our student body. Our school year kicked off with exciting, with the exciting lineup of events that set the tone for an unforgettable year on campus. From the senior sunrise to the lively freshman meet and greet and tailgate, and each occasion brought our community closer together. We kept the energy high with Friday Frundays, thrilling homecoming fairs and football games, school-wide pep rallies, and even our Fall Night Rally. We just had a school-wide trick-or-treat event last week, and it was great to see so many students and staff dressed up and involved, even Ms. G. I would like, I would like to highlight a few of our support, a few of our sports teams that have been successful this fall season. Our girls' flags football team made it to the first round of CIF playoffs. The second year, this is the second year of having a flag football team at Cabrillo. Also, our boys' water polo team made it to the second round of CIF playoffs. Our pathways have always been quite busy with many different activities, guest speakers, field trips, mentorships. We are currently, we are currently reviving our university scholars program this year to showcase and recognize high academic achievement of our students. Cabrillo Engineering, Cabrillo Engineering and Design, a CED pathway, will be holding a fall festival on November 16th. Local middle and elementary students are invited to the event where our CED students will facilitate activities and give away STEM toys to the participating students. CED attended, CED is attended in an electric vehicle expo at San Jacinto in September. CED students also saw other vendors, other vendors from electric vehicles and even learned about water safety through air quality managed district. Academy of Global Logistics, that's my pathway, the best pathway, went to Ayana, the Intermodal Association of North America Conference at the Long Beach Convention Center. Students were exposed to companies and professionals from the supply chain. AGL, AGL students introduced themselves to many professionals to learn more about their jobs and their products they create for the field. Specialized Academy of Media Arts and Animation, SACMA, Junior, SACMA, juniors attended at the Aquarium of Pacific to learn more about their high-type film festival. Students also had a chance to learn, learn about the jobs at the aquariums such as graphic designing and video creation with the puppets. SACMA juniors also got to explore the aquarium to get inspired for the upcoming film projects. SACMA seniors are getting ready to visit Disneyland California Adventure for the animation workshop this month. Every Monday, the Cabrillo Academy of Law and Justice, CalJ, speaker series, in the courtroom where professionals come to share their work. Speakers from civil litigation, personal injury, criminal law, and immigration law were present, to just to name a few. CalJ also has a teen court, a real court case, a real court case that is held in a real courtroom. Our students serve as the juries and others come to observe to see how the legal system works. Actual judges also come and make it more meaningful and a learning experience for some students. We, we have many upcoming events, including the annual dodgeball tournament, which we just did today, JAG pageant, spirit rally competitions, lip sync contests, and the holiday winter rally. We also had our second annual holiday project on December 14th, which is a community event spread to spread holiday joy. If you would like to donate a toy, we would greatly appreciate it. Can I count on you, Mr. Miller? Finally, finally, our students, finally, our United States National Drone Soccer Team is currently preparing for their trip in March to Germany to compete as the US National Drone Soccer Team. It's been an incredible start, building up our school spirit and the success in the West. Please come by and see all the great things that are happening at Cabrillo High School. Thank you for having me here tonight.
So Frank, before you come up here, so we can do pictures and everything, so when you said, "Can I count on you?", what are we agreeing to exactly? I just want to know.
You guys agreed to donate toys, STEM toys for the CED pathway on November 16th, to give away to the middle schoolers and the elementary students.
Okay.
And in December, also in December.
Well, you can count on me.
Thank you.
Me for one. Also, I think it's incredible that you borrowed our slogan, "Can I count on you?", because we had a, you know, new school year kickoff, and that was the big thing, was "Can I count on you?", so it's really great to hear it from you. But absolutely, so you've acknowledged your family and everything, that's fabulous. We usually ask you if you want to acknowledge someone, but you started out with that. So we're going to take a little pause, we're going to have you come up here, and then we'll do some pictures. I'm sorry?
Question, what are your plans after graduation?
My plans after graduation is to attend Howard University. I also want to, I also want to major in business and become a financial advisor, and also like help my mother and my father with their business, with the business that they have, so it would be a good thing to do.
My bad, all right.
Okay. School of Business, huh? That's, that's going to be no problem for Frank. I'm going to turn our attention to the screens for our vision and action. Let's see what we have.
So General Functions of Facilities Development and Planning Department for Long Beach Unified, we're really tasked with overseeing every real estate transaction and every project effort for our large-scale capital improvement program. Our capital improvement program is tasked with planning, designing, and delivering on large-scale modernization projects and new construction projects for the district. So in many cases, as we venture into schools that are 100-plus years old, they need large-scale renovations. So as we venture into design efforts and modernization efforts for elementary schools and middle schools in particular, we're looking as best as we can to physically add and convert asphalt space to green space.
The task force is essentially something that came after the passing of the board policy. It's about discussing every, like, green opportunity that we have and making sure that the district is doing the best that they can.
Something in the new sustainability plan that I'm really excited about is, I know that there has been more work towards environmental literacy, which is something that our environmental club has been wanting to work towards and help students understand that what they do matters and what they do has an impact. I'm really excited about that.
Very nice. Okay, so with our student representative, you can either stay here, or we understand if you need to go because it's, it's a school night and...
I'm okay.
Oh, you're okay? Great. Okay, well, thank you. Let's see, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, so this is the time set aside for public hearing regarding the following, approving the annual statutory school facility fees report for fiscal year 2023-24 in compliance with Government Code Sections 66006 and 66001. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item?
We don't have any speakers.
Okay, so because no one wants to speak to this item, I will now declare the hearing And next on the agenda, we have public testimony, so I will check with our Board Secretary to see if we have anyone who wishes to speak tonight.
We don't have anyone on agenda items. We do have one person for non-agenda items.
Okay, so just to reiterate, we don't have anyone who wishes to speak on items on the agenda, so we have someone to speak on an item that's not listed on the agenda. So I'll just remind our speaker that it's three minutes, and because we're doing things differently in order to incorporate our Catalina community, our Board Secretary will be announcing the speakers. That way, all of, well, I mean, we have one tonight, but not a great example, but in the future, when we have more, then our Board Secretary will have them in the order that they were accepted, and our Catalina folks will be incorporated into that list. So we will have our Board Secretary let us know who will be our speaker.
Amber Osborne.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. I'm very appreciative of this opportunity, and it's such a privilege to have my son come today and speak. I always revel in opportunities for him to be seen and him to be heard. It's not likely our youth, especially our young black youth, can, are willing to participate in these type of settings. He read along roster of his accomplishments, which included being ASB president, MVP on a soccer team, club commissioner, he's, he's had president's principal awards, he's had a 4.0, it's a little less now, but he's a little busy, we'll work on that, but he's done really well. In 2021, he was nominated as the most inspiring student for the district. So Long Beach has been, has been good to him. He also participated last year through San Kofa, the Black College Tour, where he was able to go to visit Howard University. But one thing that I do want you to understand that he also deals with is, once he got to Cabrillo, he was chased outside of the school. There's a park right across the street, there is a police department next door, he's been chased, there's been riots, there have been a lot of aggression toward our black students, and this is the type of student that is being targeted. It's not gang-affiliated students, it's not thugs, it's not, it's not losers, it's not people who have nothing better to do, it's our scholars, it's our, our presidents, it's our club leaders, it's our athletes that are being targeted. And I personally, even though the staff on campus is doing great, the exact moment that you step on the sidewalk and cross that little bitty street, my children are in danger. I'm very grateful for the Boys and Girls Club, who, that has been a safe haven. He has literally, as recent as last month, had to run back into the Boys and Girls Club from the bus stop because he was being chased by three boys, some from the school, some not from the school, friends and family. So I do want to, at this time, make a plea to the district to put more attention on the after-school surroundings at Cabrillo specifically, because it is treacherous, it's notorious, and it has been that way for years. And I'm glad that my son had an opportunity to speak, so you could see the caliber and the quality that is inside the gates, but they also need to be able to get home. We are doing all that we can to pick him up. He's getting in cars with other kids, which is a huge fear of mine, the number one cause of death for teenagers is car accidents. And so I want to eliminate these things and make sure that our scholars are safe, because everyone deserves a quality education. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have reports on our superintendent advisory groups, so we will start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Group, Dr. Benitez.
Just two items for me, President Craighead. At our next meeting, we will have a first review of two policies. One is our suicide prevention policy, and the second is a conflict of interest code. So just giving my colleagues here a heads up that those will be before us for a first review at our next meeting.
Thank you. And next, we have Instruction and Student Learning Supports, Member Lopez.
Yeah, also, just very brief, the work for the ELD Master Plan continues, so we did visit where, where we are as a district in, in working on this plan, and also the professional development that's offered to, to the, to the teachers, which includes 615 trainings this school year to face-to-face by grade and subject, and two days for math. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Next, we have Workforce Development, Member Miller.
Yes, I'll be brief. First off, just in regards to a conversation we had a couple of weeks ago around the data provided for our personnel, and really having firm understandings of each one of those definitions in regards to the status of the employee. In the workforce development, we discussed components of the Classified and Certificated Personnel Report that are found in the consent calendar at each board meeting. We are working on a memorandum and a resource packet in support of all of the proposed personnel actions. So I just thought that it was important that we made sure that you all were abreast of the work that's going on. Know that we heard you, and so we're working on something for you.
Thank you. And next, we have Student Outcome-Focused Governance, Member Otto.
Thank you. So we have, as a board, been being interviewed by the consultant and his staff from the Council of Great City Schools to come up with what we're going to be talking about at our retreat on the 7th of December, and they're putting together a program for us. We think we're making friends with the people that will be involved, and we're very interested in what it is that we can learn at that session about what it is that Student Outcome-Focused Governance is doing as a program here at the Long Beach Unified School District. And so I think the conversations have gone well so far, and we're looking forward to the upcoming retreat.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our Consent Calendar A, and this consent calendar group's the approval of routine agenda items into one action for efficiency and to allow the board to focus our meetings more on student outcomes and other key issues, so...
Second.
I will open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion on Consent Calendar A?
I just, I have a question on 44 and 45. If someone can elaborate on the contracts with Southern California Edison?
Absolutely, I'll probably provide a little context on these agreements. So this is for two pilot projects to really get us going with respect to the sustainability plan, next phase, which would be charging stations for our vehicle fleet in the district. So we've identified two facilities that are eligible for this type of funding. It's grant funding from the Southern California Edison, where they would come in and install the infrastructure. It's basically a two-phase project. Edison would install the infrastructure at their cost at our maintenance facility and the central service facility. Those two locations house the majority of our vehicle fleet for the district. Phase two would necessitate our work on behalf of the district to install the actual charging stations. So that's, they go hand-in-hand, basically.
Since you're up there, I have a question for you on these charging stations and electric vehicles. I do know that there are some already in some schools and some sites, and my question to you is, are we looking to have these charging stations available to our teachers and staff? Are they already available to them, or in the future, is that the direction that we're going?
Yeah, so no charging stations currently installed within our school sites. However, that's a conversation point. So we are having those conversations internally. At some point, we'll have a more global conversation regarding policy and what that looks like for our district. Every district does vary in terms of what that form of agreement looks like for staff members, but it, it is a slippery slope, right? So in many cases, what we've, what we've... So, in many cases, what we've, what we've seen and heard out there is it can be deemed a gift of public funds, right? If, if we're basically giving away the energy to charge an electric vehicle, would we in turn give away fuel for a gas-powered vehicle? So, not to say we're there yet. We currently don't have any such, uh, charging stations installed. These two would be the first.
Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, Mr. Manis, since you're up there, uh, if you and/or a member of your team could speak to the item that we had public hearing around today, which is our annual statutory school facilities fee, uh, report, uh, fees report, I'm sorry, for last fiscal year, um, that would be great.
Yes, I'll have Mrs. Grudem give that recap.
Good evening. Um, so, annually, we are required by government code to provide, um, a report on our statutory fees, what we collected, um, which is otherwise known as our developer fees. These are the fees that we collect anytime there's new construction within our attendance boundaries, whether that's commercial or residential. And so, this is a report that provides a summary of the fees that we've collected, how we've spent those fees and any remaining balance. It also looks at the five-year as well.
Um, is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? In that case, we'll have our board secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes five-zero.
Thank you. Uh, now, we have Consent Calendar B.
Move approval?
Okay.
Second.
I'll just clarify that it's the Approval of Resolution 110624-B, authorizing Chief Business and Financial Officer to compensate Board Member Miller for, uh, his absence at a board meeting. So, uh, is there any, uh, discussion? Then I'll ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain. And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes four with one abstention.
Thank you. Um, next, we have our Staff Report, so I will hand things over to Dr. Baker.
Thank you. I'm pleased tonight, just to introduce the item that is the first of our monitoring reports for the 2024-2025 school year. And I thought, just, um, for the public's sake, those who are looking for the monitoring calendar, as well as the dis- the board goals, um, they can be found on the board's webpage, on our district website. And so, um, earlier in the summer, you heard reports from staff around our end-of-year data and then led into the workshop item where we had a team of people, um, that include many around the table today, speak to plans that were made for this school year, actually in response to the data that was the end-of-year data. So, tonight's an opportunity to hear from our team around Goals One and Two and to reflect on what you heard at the board workshop relative to these goals. And so, with that in mind, I will, um, pass to Mr. Muskowitz.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. So, I'm going to quickly hand off to Dr. Madrigal. Um, we're excited. We are focusing in on our Board Goals One and Two tonight. Um, as Dr. Baker said, some of what we shared, um, at the board workshop in October, as far as the adult actions, um, uh, you know, I know that was a few weeks ago, but I really want you to keep those in mind. The data that you're going to hear about today actually came out of our I-Ready Assessment in September. The actions that we are already taking as a result of that data were some of those actions that we shared with you in, in October. But our team here, um, Mr. Zaid, Mr. Samuels, Dr. Lund, we are all ready, if need be, to come up and, and, or to add to or remind you of some of the actions that we're taking with throughout our system. But we're going to, uh, kick it off then to Dr. Madrigal to share the, uh, update on our data for Board Goals One and Two.
Board members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, uh, senior team members, and our LBUSD community, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, kick off our start-of-the-year data monitoring presentation. And I also want to take an opportunity to thank our, um, Office of Research and Student Outcome staff who collaborated and contributed to this presentation today. So, today, we begin our, um, second year of monitoring, um, our board goals. So, hard to believe that we are now in our second year. And so, for the purpose of our meeting today, we are going to focus on Board Goal One and Two, which is around reading proficiency and acceleration. So, Board Goal One, Reading Proficiency states that the percentage of grade-three students who meet or exceed grade-level standards on the state English Language Arts Aspac assessment will grow from forty-eight percent in June 2023 to seventy percent by June 2028, with our leading indicators being our I-Ready reading placement and our foundational reading skills assessment. And so, today, our presentation is really grounded around our I-Ready placement assessment data and our foundational reading skills assessment. We will provide you with that update in the second reporting, which is roughly around February because our students do not take Versa until December. So, that data will become available after that. You might be familiar with a previous, uh, calendar that we provided or, um, what I like to consider a year at a glance, which was previously, we shared with you the, um, times that we administer Diagnostic One, Two, and Three, and also, we listed the instructional weeks that students were in during those diagnostic assessments. This year, we decided to shift into looking at more of a year at a glance with this calendar, which really provides, um, an opportunity for us to look at when the assessments are given. So, similar to last year, September, December, and March, so that has not changed. But it gives you kind of an understanding of when we give the assessment and then the time that it takes us to gather that data, provide, um, an in-depth analysis, and then come back to the board and give you the update. So, in keeping with this calendar in mind, as we continue to give an update to the board, we want to, uh, we want you to think about the calendar, the assessments, when the data is available and we prov- when we provide you with that update. So, looking at, I just want to point something out, which will be important when we give our second reporting. Versa in December, we don't administer, you might wonder, well, why are we not presenting Versa data today? The reason we don't provide or we don't administer Versa is that in collaboration with teachers or focus groups, we want to make sure that we assess students when they've learned the skills. So, by the time they have, um, given, uh, they've been provided instruction around Unit Four, they're ready to take the first Versa assessment, and that's why we give it to them in December. So, just a little context around why. And you're also familiar, perhaps, with this data monitoring, uh, slide, which indicates, um, who is our cohort? Last year, our cohort was our TK group, who are now in kindergarten. So, today, you will not hear data around our kindergarteners because we're going to save that for the second update. But we will focus today on Grade One, Two, and Three as it pertains to I-Ready because that is the assessment or the leading indicator that is supporting this goal. So, I want to give you some context also or frame so that we're all thinking about I-Ready in the same way as it pertains to the data that you're going to see. So, when we think about the I-Ready assessment, I want to define it for you. The I-Ready assessment is a diagnostic assessment. I know I've shared that before with the board and our community. Um, and the purpose of that assessment is really to let us know where our students are, and it's a one assessment. And we look at that. For Board Goals, we're using it as a leading indicator. But I want to also call out that we also look at other common assessments in our district to inform our decision-making, whether it's at the site level, at district level. Now, when we're looking at Diagnostic One, I want you to think about, Diagnostic One is really telling us where our students are starting the school year. So, when you look at this data for Goal One, our Diagnostic One, or D1, as some of us refer to, we are looking at where kids are placing as they're starting the year. Now, keep in mind that our students started school in September and they took the assessment shortly after starting school. So, they're starting in the beginning of the year, and this is where they're placing. So, what we notice is that comparing this year's Diagnostic One to last year's, we did not see much of a difference. We saw a slight change, maybe two percent fewer students in Grade One, Two, and Three that were early on or mid or above grade level. Now, if you hone into that bottom part of the pie graph, we see that one grade level below, we have about forty-four percent of students that are placing one year below. So, I'll give you the example of, if I'm a fifth grader and I'm placing there, you can infer that that student is coming in perhaps at mid-four, maybe, um, they're coming in at the end of fourth grade because they're starting the school year. And I-Ready assess on grade-level standards for the whole year. Now, keep in mind, our students just started, so they haven't been given instruction in their current grade level. So, when we look at our second reporting in February, we're going to hone in on this particular group to see how much growth because that's when we want to see that growth because they've been given enough instruction to be able to see, did they move from this placement into that mid-grade level or above? So, just want to call that out because when you look at that, you might think forty-four percent are at below one grade level. It's where they're placing right now at the beginning of the school year. Now, when we look at the data, breaking it down by grade level, we also saw very few uh, changes in comparison to the previous year. We saw that grades one, two, and three had one to two percent fewer students that were scoring early on or at mid or above grade level for Diagnostic One compared to, as I mentioned, the fall of 2023. Um, so, it's just calling out where students are placing at each of the grade levels. And so, a couple of highlights for, uh, Goal One as it pertains to our, um, D1 placement is that, um, I want to just call out that we did look for some emerging trends to see where did we see some bright lights or some highlights that we could possibly, um, gather some more additional data. So, one of the, uh, one of the trends that we did see consistently across our elementary level was that for Grade Two, we saw that, um, many schools, we identified eight schools, demonstrated an increase in percentage of students that were above grade level at or above grade level. We also saw that approximately twelve students reduced the number of students that were placing two grade levels or below. Um, so, those were some of the trends. And one thing we want to just k- call out as well is that, that really reflects their first-grade learning and teaching for our sev- or our second-grade students because, again, they're coming in, they're starting the year, and it's what they've learned the previous year. And so, I'm going to hand this off now to Mr. Muskowitz to give a little more, uh, context in regards to, um, possible action plans or inputs.
So, this, uh, visual here is one that we also used at our board workshop in October. I'm sure you remember it vividly, uh, from our time together. Um, really, what this captures is, it's a very, it's, it's a very, uh, simple visual of all of the work that we're doing within our district and how things like our district strategic plan, our LCAP that's approved by the board every year, come together to determine what are the actions that we're going to take? What are the actions that our adults in our system are going to take in the school year? So, over on the right, I'll start over on the right. Those are our board goals that flow into our district goals. And you may remember in hearing from Mr. Zaid and Mr. Samuels that there has been a flow-down all the way across to their levels, into individual schools, into individual departments or grade levels, down to the individual classroom teacher setting goals aligned to this. So, when we look on the right, we're talking about what are the outcomes we want for our students? They're aligned from board goals to classroom goals and everything in between. So, if that's what we're wanting to see in our students, and, and today's presentation is a dipstick into how our students performing, we know that those are, all of, all of the student data is a version of a lagging indicator, right? It's something that after some instruction has taken place, we can see where our students are at. So, where we want to spend a lot of our time this year is also thinking about the inputs from the adults. And the inputs from the adults include everybody around this table, our principals, our teachers, throughout all of our departments. And a lot of that work is grounded in our strategic plan. These are the outputs that we want to see, um, when we think about, uh, system portrait, adult portrait, graduate portrait. What are the characteristics we want to be seeing demonstrated among the adults in our system and the students in our system? So, when you talk about the inputs on the left, that's where we have, and, and, um, Ms. Lopez, you've referenced today, our, um, pr- uh, professional development that is taking place throughout our district this year, giving really intentional, explicit support to our teachers. Uh, you've heard things like our Instruction Intervention Coordinators that are at all of our, um, elementary and middle schools to make sure we're providing, supporting teachers with quality Tier-One instruction and also making sure that students are receiving intervention that they may need. So, on the input side, and we can, we can elaborate more on this, these are the things that we're doing in, um, in, because of the, the data that we see. We saw certain data results in September. We saw certain data results at the end of last year in June. And as a result of those, our district team, our principals, our teachers have developed action plans aligned to how are we going to, um, improve those outcomes for students by doing things differently as the adults? So, ju- it's, it's a quick visual as a reminder, really, back to what we did in October. And I know Dr. Madrigal in a bit will reference back to, as we, as we think about ongoing Student Outcome Focused Governance, we'll have opportunities for you all to hear from practitioners in the field, to hear about what those adult, uh, those inputs look like on a day-to-day basis. But just, we thought it was important to ground that while we're looking at student outcomes today and, and the, the dipstick into where our students are right now from a, uh, I-Ready standpoint, we want to connect it back to, we don't look at that in isolation. We look at that in connection to the adult actions that we're taking in our system.
I also appreciate the alignment with the, um, the new colors and our, and our new branding, the, you know, the visual of that. So, thank you.
So, now, we're going to move to Board Goal Two, which is our Reading Acceleration Goal. And when we are talking about Goal Two, we look at, we're not necessarily at this time of the year, we're not looking at measuring growth, but we can review the placement of the students in this analysis by looking at their I-Ready, uh, placement. So, I do want to read our Goal Two, which is, uh, Reading Acceleration, the percentage of students in Grade Four through Eight scoring at the not-met achievement level in the prior year who met the scale-score growth target on the state Aspac English Language Arts Assessment will increase from twenty-eight percent in June 2023 to sixty percent in June 2028. And as a leading indicator, we're looking at I-Ready growth, but as I mentioned, we're just looking at placement today. And we might wonder, like, who are the students that we're specifically looking at or grades? We're currently looking at our fourth graders who were last year third graders and took Aspac. So, we're looking at grades Four through Eighth Grade. And as we move along, when we get to, uh, twenty-twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we'll look at, we'll continue to look at the same grades, but you can see how our students are moving along as they progress to the grades. So, in looking at our D1 placement from prior year Aspac not-met students, what we notice is that for, um, and we shared this data point in our summative, uh, reporting, I believe in Oc- October, we mentioned that for every, um, students in Grade Four through Eight who were in that not-met, um, category, we're talking about three out of every students. So, when we're looking at our Aspac not-met students as it pertains to I-Ready, we looked at, did their placement on I-Ready, uh, somewhat correlate to Aspac? And we d- we can say that for the most part, most of our students that did not meet did fall into, um, that sixty percent or sixty-eight percent that indicated three grade levels or below. However, I do want to mention that specifically, specifically for fourth grade, we noticed that there was a decrease in our not-met students in that three grade levels or below. So, we went from, we went, we, we saw an increase of students moving out of that category into perhaps being one grade level below or even two grade levels below. So, they are making some movement out of that placement of the three grade levels or below. Now, when we disaggregate the data by looking at grade levels, um, as I mentioned, we looked at fourth and fifth grade. Um, with fourth grade, I want to point out again that there were four percent fewer students that were three grade levels or below, which might not feel like a lot of students, but the goal is to move our students out of that not-met. Because fourth grade, when our fourth graders, for example, this year take Aspac, the scale-score range is a very wide scale-score range. And so, we want to get them as close as possible on the placements away, on I-Ready, away from the three grade levels or below. So, as we get closer to taking that Aspac in fourth grade, our students will be scoring out of those not-met category or even the, um, on I-Ready, out of that three g- grade levels or below. And in fifth grade, we noticed that, um, there wasn't much change compared to last year. In middle school, we disaggregated by grade level, and we also observed no differences in regards to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year compared to this academic school year on Diagnostic One. So as also with our goal one, we wanted to also call out some highlights for goal two and some of the trends that we did see. In our data was that. We saw that with similar schools and just making sure that we define what does it mean by similar schools? When we define similar schools or group them together, we're specifically looking at schools that are. Basically have the same either racial, ethnic makeup or low SES or comparing also. The percentage of English language learners. So when we're talking about similar schools. We look at the schools to see what were some of the similarities in terms of the data, what were some gains? And we did see that two out of the six groups showed a trend of reducing that placement, as I mentioned. In students in the three grade levels or below. And we also saw that about eight schools in the two groups reduced the percentage of students that were significantly lower. In previously, so that forty-nine to forty-one is in reference to fourth grade. So that is the percentage that we reduced in that three grade levels or below. So I'm going to pause here because this is where we want to call out that there were some schools and we're going to have an opportunity in December. To what we refer to as bringing the qualitative data in, humanizing the data, giving voice to some of this data. Right now, you're looking at a map and wondering, well, who are these schools? Like, what do we want to learn or what questions do we want to ask them? So we're going to have an opportunity to bring them and share some of their practices. Some of the information or maybe some of their own learning, whether it was learning from their professional development. What instructional changes or what leadership moves did they make that they contribute to some of the positive outlier data? And that we will share with you in our December qualitative reporting. So in summary for goal one and two, overall, our diagnostic one placement data was very similar to the previous year. We didn't see much change, slight decreases, as I mentioned, in the early on to mid above grade level. For grades one through three, we know that we need to continue to monitor this data. And that it's a starting point for us. It's diagnostic one, it tells us where students are and it also allows us to respond to this data. To be able to provide an update in February with showing some growth. So in terms of progress over time, because that has been a discussion point during board meetings. We want to continue to consider what additionally can we do for our not met students in terms of. A study looking at cohort data, we also want to know who are the students? When did they enter our system? And when I say system, I don't mean just our district, but when did they enter perhaps our our state, our country? There's a lot of information that we need to gather about our not met students so that we can learn how to provide additional support. And also, what are those key influencers that are going to help our not met students? And so this will be our task in the research department to continue to explore that. And also our out, our network of core districts that we continue to engage around this conversation. With our not met students, because it is something that we talk about in our district, but also outside in our networks. In collaboration with Core, with PACE from Stanford. So there is a lot of discussion to help support us with our progress monitoring for our board goals as well as our district goals. So I'm going to pause here for questions.
I do have a question, Dr. Madrigal, and thank you for the presentation. So obviously concerning is that over fifty percent of our students in the middle school are. Three or more grade levels below grade level. And realistically, it's very, it's going to be a challenge for teachers. To bring them anywhere close to great level in a year. And then you mentioned that that there are some schools that have shown progress. What are they doing that could help the other schools? Because at this point, we may be in a very similar boat that we were last year in terms of our data at the end of the school year.
Well, I think I'll I'll start it and then I'll hand it off for anyone that would like to provide additional specific information in terms of the practices that. They may be seen at the site. As Mr. Moskowitz informed us earlier that. We took the, the students took the placement data in September. So it is a starting point and a lot has happened since September and those are like the practices. So I think. One, in December, we're going to learn from a middle school and an elementary school that we've identified to be able to bring in. Some of their qualitative data around what did they see that was. Informing them in terms of what they're going to do differently and what changes did they do? And I said, I said earlier, it's not just. How do we support students? But it's a combination of students, instructional moves. Leadership moves, professional development. And so we'll hear more about those practices, but I'm going to hand it off for additional.
Ms. Lopez, I just want to make sure I go back to the data point that I think you were referencing, make sure we're on the same page. Is this, so this, I just want to be clear what this shows. These are the students who were scored at the not met category on S back last year. And for the, just that subset of students, then we were asking, where are they on their diagnostic one placement? So sixty-eight percent of the students who were not met on S back are at three or more more grade levels below. Twelve percent are actually pretty much coming in where we would expect them to be kind of on grade level. These are students who are basically just the one year behind. So that's a group we'll focus in on. So then, again, of those same students in fourth grade. Of those students who were not meeting on S back, this is the percent coming across the different categories. And then you reference this one here. But again, this is just a snapshot of the students who were scoring in the not met category. So I believe you had said that fifty percent of students were at that grade level were three or more years below.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, when kids are multiple years below grade level, it is incredibly challenging for a teacher. As as talented and as skilled as they are in the classroom to bring them to grade levels. So realistically speaking. You know, we will see progress, but not the progress we ideally like to see.
And you may all recall that part of our, part of the board goal that you all set for board goal two is that. For students who are not meeting on S back, that we are giving them a three year, really within three years, we want them to be back on to grade level. So the acceleration is not in one year, because that that is going to be incredibly difficult, though not unheard of, it does happen. But that we're really looking at over a three year period that students will make the progress. They need accelerated progress to be able to get back on to grade level within those three years.
So just to build on Ms. Lopez's question, I'll ask the question slightly different and see if I get. A little bit of a different response and I and I would invite anyone at any grade level to to share. So my context, Dr. Madrigal continues to be, what's the data we're seeing? Got it. What is the data telling us? Thank you. And then, you know, ultimately, are we seeing what we want to see with this data? So given that the first diagnostic is in this in September. My assumption is that we're not going to wait till right before December to figure out what we do between September's. You know, first diagnostic and the second diagnostic. If I'm interpreting the data correctly, so let me start with that. See, I follow the prompts from the last workshop, Mr. Moskowitz. I'm seeing two trends. As preliminary as they are, right? Let's say four percent. One trend is we do have students moving into the nearly met or met. But I'm also seeing the trend that the higher the grade level we go. The higher the percentage for those students that have not met or not ma- or not meeting. Tends tends to go hot three levels or more, alright? So. The the specificity of my question here is when I'm going to try to nuance building on Ms. Lopez's question. So what specifically are we doing, whether it's professional development? Or resources or practices? Can can we speak to the specifics of? I'm a teacher at, one of the dots here, I'm thinking is Oropesa. I think one of the other ones is Roosevelt that we're pulling this data from. What, what am I doing? What am I being provided? How am I being supported as a teacher, as a principal, as the team at that school? When I get these results in September, diagnostic one results. To maximize the growth, the acceleration, not just, you know. We're not, we're not expecting here a three level growth, alright? But what, can can we, can can you all share what specifically, because I am hearing professional development, support. But what is that? What are we doing differently? What are we doing more of? So we had a day pupil free day last Friday. Wondering what happens on that pupil free day on Friday. So couldn't, can we speak?
Actually, I'd like to ask Mr. Zaid, Mr. Samuels and Dr. Lund and anyone else would like to just kind of take a moment. Kind of connect us back to the things we shared at the board workshop, because that is really where we were setting out our action plan for the year. And to connect back to the specific question, what are we doing as it relates to board goal one and two?
So, great question, and I also appreciate the reference to the pupil free day that we just had on last Friday, because it really gave each site an opportunity to hone in. On the instructional strategies and the quality core instruction, their area of focus. And making sure that we were meeting the needs of students as well as doing some lesson planning. What I would share at the. Elementary and K eight level is, of course, we have our focus K through two, really focusing on our foundational reading skills. Focusing on daily decoding routines. This year, making a shift in second grade to really focus on fluency. And to ensure that we are supporting reading. As well as small group instruction and looking at the individual needs of students and supporting them in small groups based on. Their academic levels. Secondly, we also have at each one of our schools, as Mr. Moskowitz referenced. An intervention and instructional coordinator who meets with teachers on a regular basis. Also, we have literacy leads who co-plan with teachers, work with small groups of students that need some additional support. And we have schools that engage in a variety of different professional developments that take them deeper into learning. Which include doing lesson studies, doing release days too specifically. Look at data, having what we refer to sometimes as knee to knees, where administrators and teachers. Sit down side by side and look at the individual performance of students and how we are meeting those needs. So those are just a few of the things that we are doing and and ways in which we support. And then as a part, and I'll just mention this right before I pass it over. Mr. Samuels spoke at our last board workshop day around what we would call just our cycle. And the way in which we look at the data, we refer to it as a collaborative data study. But it's an opportunity for instructional teams and our administrators to come together with their staff and really look at the individual. Performance of students. How are we looking across a variety of measures, including VERSA? I ready, some of the ones that have been lifted up. And then what specific action steps do we want to take as a site? How will we meet those needs in the classroom? And how will we use our leads and our intervention and instructional coordinators to support those students? Let me hand off for some secondary support as well.
Thank you. I would also just add along with the things that Mr. Zaid mentioned. From a leadership perspective, we are working with our principals and assistant principals as well. So what, one thing that we've ensured is that our principals, number one, are learning from each other. And so we're actually, as early as next week, we're going to actually have some cross level classroom visits. And there's some calibration on how do we provide feedback, what are we looking for? We're using a K twelve. Tool in which we are all looking at the same thing, whether you're elementary, middle or high, when we go into classrooms. And so all of our administrators have had some opportunities to utilize that tool since September. And then, of course, as we go together in classrooms next week, we will calibrate across levels. We're also working to ensure that we, as we have been learning from the four disciplines of execution. Is to minimize the whirlwind for administrators and to really have an intense focus on instruction. And so our administrators this year have exponentially increased the number of classroom visits that they're making. To make sure that they're able to provide direct support to teachers in their classrooms. And so our teams have been working along with elementary teams to minimize all the extra things that are placed on their laps. So that they can really devote more time to supporting our teachers. And as well as the people free day and aligning their professional development to the QCI training that teachers have received. Our OCIPD team has done a great job of providing teachers with training. But our sites have also aligned their site training to that training. And so once a month during their faculty meetings, they're providing additional training. Some schools not only have their people free day, but some schools are also establishing release days for teachers as well. And they're and they're providing training for them in in specific areas, in particular in this area of reading. We have our English teachers taking a full day together at sites to deepen their understanding of their content and their supportive students. And and so I would say that those are a few of the things that we're doing from a leadership perspective. Along with some of the things that Mr. Zaid mentioned for for our teachers.
When you, while you respond, Dr. Lund. And excuse my naivety. So if we could talk one, like, let's, let's say we have a cross section of a Roman road. You all are giving me like the top three layers, which is fantastic. I'm hearing words like action steps, calibrate, visiting classrooms. I'm wondering if you could speak to, okay, what does that translate into a teacher either doing or doing differently? I'm hearing about meetings that are going on. What comes out of this meeting that then ends up back in the classroom? And again, I know there's a lot there. I'm just that curious. Board member right now that has wonderings about what comes out of these action plans? What is an action step? Is that helpful, Dr. Lund?
Yeah, I'll try to elaborate on building out what Mr. Zaid had shared around some of the practices at the school site. So our teachers spent the last year and a half, our K two teachers around building and understanding around the science of reading. You know, really honing, learning around what effective phonics phonemic awareness instruction looks like, effective vocabulary instruction looks like, meaning making, fluency. This year in particular, it's really going into depth on those practices. Our training is twofold. It is our coaches going in and doing trainings out at sites, modeling practice. Engaging in some collaborative planning. Training the leads out at school sites to conduct lesson study around those practices and bringing those practices then back to the classroom. So that's the connection around new learning, deepening learning, and then transferring that learning back into practice in the classroom. And then that effective practice hopefully translates into higher student achievement in those content areas. So that's in the K two realm. In the three, three to eight realm, it does look different, to be honest with you. So our focus. Our three to five teachers receive designated ELD training this year, so that was their introduction to literacy training. The literacy leads and IICs and interventionists at our title one schools in particular. Are doing work directly with the students that are in that not met group. So we do trainings on a monthly basis with all of our interventionists around effective literacy strategies. In support of older readers. So the way this looks in an element in an early elementary classroom, in a TKK classroom. Needs to look different than what it looks like in a four, five, sixth grade classroom. In support of gaps that students may have in those early literacy skills. So our interventionists in particular play a key role in supporting that group of students in the elementary school. Those interventionists aren't in the secondary schools. So in our secondary schools, it's typically through our CCR coursework that we've discussed previously. It could also be through direct training of our English teachers and how they support students at different levels. So today, in particular, I was in an ELA training with our high school teachers, but the same is occurring with our middle school teachers. On analysis of data, collective analysis of data and responding to that data. So not only do I understand the data that I'm looking at, but what's the implication for my classroom instruction based on this data? And in particular, this training was around our common assessment data, which is looking at priority standards that have high impact on reading skills. So it's, you know, when you look at the data itself and you see that high number, high percentage of not met students, three or more grade levels below. Part of that is just the nature of an assessment. That three or more grade levels below means something different in eighth grade than it means in fourth grade. In fourth grade, three or more grade levels below takes you down to a first grade level. In eighth grade, three or more grade levels below could. In eighth grade, three or more grade levels below could be fifth grade, or fourth grade, or third grade, or second grade. So, a larger variation in what that means. So, part of that analysis of data is, how do I respond to this? And I will say in ELA, the difference is often reading analysis. Reading in third grade is reading in eighth grade. It's just the complexity of the reading that occurs. So how do I scaffold appropriately so that students still are doing a deeper analysis in complex text to be able to close that gap? Unlike math, where you may have more specific skills gaps in language or in ELA, that does not happen in the same way. It's more the text complexity, and how do I tackle more complex text in the upper grade that we've built into the training and supported teachers in that way of analyzing that data to be able to address those student needs?
Are we ready? Oh, sorry. Alana?
I have a question. So, I know my experience with taking the iReady and the SPECT and these diagnostic tests. And so, I was wondering what these tests look like for the younger grade levels? Are they just as long, or what does that look like for them?
So, it does look different in the sense of when you're thinking about, for example, like a first grader taking the assessment versus a fifth grader. The tests are not timed, but we have to keep in mind developmentally the student's age and their ability. There's the technical aspects. I'll use a first grader who has not taken iReady and has to learn that technical skill of logging in what to click, although they've used maybe a Chromebook. It's also, you know, something new that they have to balance between taking a test on a device and then now getting started. So that's one example. It does, it does look different. We do have to add more time. Teachers are very aware that they have to make those adjustments based on the students. And we also have to keep in mind that different students have different needs and they need different learning, they learn in different learning modalities. So we have to keep that in line for all our students. So, the iReady assessment is not timed. It is flexible in the sense that teachers have that flexibility to space it out and also determine what's a good time to give it, because the testing conditions are very important. You've been through our system as an elementary, middle school student, and sometimes taking a test in the morning is better for certain students versus taking it in the afternoon, right after lunch, when elementary students are probably not going to do their best to demonstrate their skill sets. So, all of that is taken into consideration, and the teachers, the site make those decisions. And that's the piece about iReady, it's not timed. We give them a window to make those determinations based on the students that they're serving and teaching.
Great question, board member.
As a follow-up to that, Dr. Madrigal, we've had, on several occasions, teachers and other school site staff, as well as parents, expressed concerns over assessing and having too many assessments throughout the year. How do we gauge what that sweet spot is between, you know, wanting to have assessments that, you know, provide valuable information for us, but also needing some time, right? Otherwise, you know, you get caught up and you're having assessments every other week. And again, this is in addition to course-specific assessments that teachers are also developing. So, what are those conversations like? What are those sweet spots? You know, because on an ongoing basis, we've also heard from students, right? It takes a toll on students to be continuously in assessment mode.
So, I'll give you more of the, kind of like that global perspective in terms of how we determine assessments. So, in our district, we have an assessment matrix. And the matrix is, it's a public document. You can find it on our website, parents have access to it. And it really spells out, calls out what assessments are given to students by grade. And the assessment is really put together towards the end of the year. But before that, there's a lot of conversation between the level offices, OCIPD, to determine what assessments are we going to continue to keep based on the data, based on why we are assessing certain skills. And also, we make some determinations, right, based on where we're going and what assessments are available. Assessments that we gave a couple of years ago, we may not use anymore because it don't have validity in terms of what we're measuring at this point. So there are conversations, collaborations. It's not determined by a department or a level. It's really this collaboration that takes place with, I have to call out, not just administrators, but also teacher leaders, curriculum leaders that inform us on what students are being taught and what's the right assessment. And they're ongoing, and, you know, it's, your question is very timely because we just had a conversation with the team around the assessments that we're currently giving and our ability to pull data and assess. And because there's multiple layers to that, it's not just giving the assessment, it's giving the assessment, when is that assessment available? And when we use a third-party or a platform, it's also keeping in mind, how does that integrate to our student database? And the availability of being able to pull that data and then report in this example of like board reporting. So there's multiple factors that go into that. But yes, that's an ongoing yearly conversation because we're very mindful that we do have a lot of assessments, and we want to make sure that we're not over-assessing and we're getting input from our different groups that are involved in this assessment process.
The one thing I'll add to that, and thank you, Dr. Madrigal, I think we're always asking ourselves kind of a simple question. What is the fewest assessments that we can administer to students that will give us the actionable information that teachers need in order to do, provide students with what they need? And that is not an easy answer. Different students sometimes need different opportunities. We've had, we've had times in our district's history where we kind of looked at one assessment, and we made a lot of decisions about that one benchmark assessment. We know that that's not a good practice. So now, we look at multiple assessments because we want to get a well-rounded perspective of a student's ability. Well, multiple assessments, by definition, means multiple assessment opportunities. And that then can, then we're dealing with that struggle with how do we make sure we're not over-assessing? So we're constantly asking ourselves, the fewest number we can possibly give that will give us the actionable data we need so that our teachers can provide students the resources that they need? And again, not simple. I just had a great opportunity, as did Mr. Zaid. We were with Teacher Council at elementary last week. When I was there talking with them, Teacher Council, as a reminder, is one teacher from every elementary school, elementary and K-8 school, who is selected by their peers to represent kind of the voice of the school. They had a lot of questions about assessment. And we set up for an agenda in January for the curriculum team and the research team to come and hear from teachers on Teacher Council, like, what can we do differently or better? Constantly asking teachers, how can we improve this? We know it's never perfect, but we're trying to just fine-tune to get it as best as possible so that, again, teachers have the information they need to act on that. Anything the team would add?
No, it's nice to know that we're going to the teachers as far as what they see as being maybe, you know, too many assessments or, you know, how their kids are doing, because it all comes down to what's happening in the classrooms, and the teachers are the best people to let us know about that. So it's nice to know that that collaboration includes the ones responsible for giving the assessments. Do we have any other questions, or? Okay, I think we can, I think we can move on.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. I also want to thank everybody responsible for collecting the data, making that available. I know we have quite an extensive research department, and I'm always thankful for them because smaller districts don't have the luxury of a large staff like we do. So, that's something that is very fortunate to have.
I'm sure Dr. Madrigal wishes she had more. From her perspective, she's probably understaffed.
Well, that's true, that's true. And everybody works, you know, hard. Everybody contributes quite a lot. Okay, I have lost my place. Okay, new business. So, 18.1, approval of plan to close Hudson Elementary School at the end of 2024, 2025 school year. So that's the end of this school year, and that's an action item. So, we will need to take a vote on this, so I need a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I'll ask this question that I've asked before, see if there's been any change in the question or in the answer, and that is, will transportation be offered? Not public, public transportation, but will school buses be offered to our families from the site from Hudson to Garfield?
There are, there are no plans right now for school bus transportation. We're still working with families, many of whom actually live closer to Garfield Elementary in the boundary. And then, once we have all of the data, there will be a consideration for if there's a need for crossing guard to get across Santa Fe, and we'll look at the data of where those families live, but we're not contemplating school bus transportation at this time.
Okay, so no transportation for the families?
Any further discussion? Then I will ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
No.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Sorry, 4-1.
President Craighead, before you leave this item, I do want to thank all of the staff who was out to meet with families at Hudson Elementary. We had approximately 30 staff members there for a parent meeting to answer questions. And about probably the same number of families that were there, great care was provided by Mr. Zaid and his team, as well as a number of other social workers, Family Resource Center staff, Office of School Support Services. And so, in a very difficult situation, great care is being provided to families. And the process, in this size of a school, the process is very individualized for the placement and consideration for where families will actually re-enroll if they're not going to Garfield Elementary.
And I apologize from a bit out of turn here, but I just wanted to piggyback on that statement as well. And I think that Dr. Benitez said it best, is that when it came to the decision about Hudson, it is about providing the best quality education for the students that were attending Hudson. I do think that this decision will help do that.
And I do want to explain my no vote. I do firmly believe that there's going to, we're going to have families that are going to have challenges getting their kids. We're talking about a school in the West Side. We're going to have families that are going to have challenges getting their kids from, from, from the Hudson Elementary to Garfield. And I know when I asked this question before, I was told that the kids can get on a public school bus, I mean, sorry, on a public bus. But if you have a four or five-year-old, as a parent, I, I don't know how comfortable parents are putting their four- or five-year-old, six-year-old on a public bus. So, I do want to explain, my no vote really has to do with the fact that I strongly believe our families, especially in the West Side, may need transportation from Hudson to Garfield.
Yeah, and my sense of this is with all the work that's gone into how this transition is going to be made, first of all, there doesn't appear to be a large need, but those needs can be addressed once we know what the issues are. And we're working on that right now. And I've been very impressed with the process that we've gone through. It seems dysfunctional to try and keep a school with 230 students open because you can't provide quality education for the students that are there, especially when it's going to go down to below 200 next year. And so, what I'm assuming we're doing with, if we send all these people out to, to assess what the needs are, consider the distances between the schools, and the need to make sure that all students have quality education that, that will come up with answers to problems that are practical. And when I say practical, what I mean is, if it's 10 students that might require transportation, maybe we could provide something. I don't know, I don't know what the numbers will be. We're in the process of doing this. We're not talking about closing the school for another seven or eight months. And a lot can be learned during that period of time. And I feel confident in what we do and how we do it, that, that we'll find good solutions to this.
In addition to what I shared about actually many students living closer to Garfield, approximately 30% of the currently attending Hudson students already live in the Garfield school boundary. And so, the next item you'll be entertaining is the recommendation to consolidate those boundaries. And just knowing that of the currently attending Hudson students, approximately 30 of them already live in that attendance boundary.
And bottom line, it's always a, it's always a sad day when it becomes necessary to close one of our schools. And that, we wouldn't be doing it if there weren't really good reasons for it.
And on that note, I'd also like to express my appreciation to the teachers and the school principal at Hudson. While this is a very difficult situation for them, and they're going to be leaving a place that they've called their professional home, they have also made a strong commitment to their families and to their students to make the best of this year and to not let learning stop and to support students and their families in that transition. And so, while they're grieving and thinking about the end of something that's been very important to them, they are centering students, which really speaks to a core value of our district in centering students. So I just want to, didn't want to not express my deep appreciation to them as well.
So, I do want to, I'm under the impression that our special-edged students from Hudson are going to Bixby. Is that correct? So that is also not around the corner for them. And I do believe they may, they will have transportation, is that correct? But I, but they are going to a pretty, a school on the other side of town.
So, our students that are in special-day classrooms, their program will be transferring to Bixby Elementary. And actually, those students live all across the district. They aren't necessarily in the residential area of Hudson. And so, we actually could provide the board with a map, a plot map of where all of those students live, but they actually reside across the district, and their program will be moving to Bixby, and they will be provided transportation.
Madam Chair, if I could just get some guidance procedurally, I would ask the chair and legal, if needed. We're trying to uphold parliamentary decision-making here. We had a motion, we had a second, the question was called, we had an opportunity for discussion. I worry that when we are flexible with each other, and again, in the spirit of this is an important issue, that we're also trying to maximize on our board bylaws, our board governance. We haven't formally adopted Robert's Rules of Order, but quite frankly, I have a lot to say about it too. The opportunity for discussion was there, and so I was saving my questions, observations for the second item, which is in relation to the boundaries. And so, I would just ask the chair, legal, if we can get some guidance here. Otherwise, it becomes a free-for-all after we've already taken a vote on something.
So, so the vote was already taken, I apologize. Okay. And so, I think that the response was in, or, I agree, once the vote is taken, there shouldn't necessarily be further discussion. I think Dr. Baker just made a comment after the vote was taken, just in terms of staff. But there is another opportunity for the next discussion. But after you've taken the vote, the matter is tabled or completed, and so, there shouldn't be any further discussion.
Yeah, and my concern here, Jeff, stems from when a conversation then begins to influence the next item, right? I have concerns about that procedurally, right? We haven't made a motion on the boundaries. And the boundaries have implications for transportation, school of choice, enrollments, capacity. And so, I worry that we're having a discussion after a vote has been taken, where we've already had a discussion on that vote, and that then this starts to influence, shape, guide, impact discussion for an item that we haven't made a motion on yet.
I was just going to say, I will consider my comments as well.
So, we will move to item 18.2, approval of the consolidation of Hudson Elementary School. item eighteen point two, approval of the consolidation of Hudson Elementary School and Garfield Elementary School attendance boundaries. This is also an action item, so we need a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion? Dr. Benitez?
Yes, so let me figure out how I navigate this now. So appreciate the accompanying information on what considerations we're taking to draw up the boundary here. So we're talking about enrollments, capacity, vicinity. But if I recall, one of the considerations that was provided, and I didn't hear it mentioned today, so I apologize if it was, was that families from Hudson would also be given priority for school of choice. All right, so I think it is important to note that we're still in conversation, right, to be able to make determinations. So my wondering is around then the boundary, given that we're still not sure who's going to attend where or who's made a choice, unless we already have that information, so just clarity around what the considerations were. You know, that, that's why I was hoping that we could have the conversation here.
So, and I don't know if DeBiranda wants to speak specifically to the boundary, but to your question, Dr. Benitez, the boundary is a separate action that doesn't have any association with the school of choice for the Hudson closure. So each family from Hudson is given the option to either specifically just go to Garfield, that is the default, if you might, and an opportunity with an individualized school of choice application separate from the district's school of choice process, before any of that happens, to rank as many schools, if they wanted to say, in order, here are my top ten schools, because I work next to fill-in-the-blank school, and that makes it easier for my family, and we have childcare at every elementary school at this point, so they in rank order, and then the elementary office will be working with individual parents to make those placements prior to the district's school of choice. So completely separate, the, the boundary change and the consolidation affects any family moving into the potentially consolidated boundary going forward, that they would enroll at Garfield Elementary going forward.
That would be their neighborhood school within the, if we take action and and it's favorable within the new proposed boundary.
Yes.
And, and again, as a part of that, I also want to clarify, I, I'll, I'll ask it as a question. Are we not required to provide transportation for students with disabilities to the least restrictive environment? School in cases where it's not a school of choice? Question, it's a, 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 a matter of access and inclusion?
Yeah, so based on whatever the IEP requires, so in the case of the students that would be going to Bixby, they also will have the opportunity to request to go to a different school that has a program that they want and get transportation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
Out of curiosity, is there any transportation for any, any school in the district for, for kids outside of public transportation and outside of our sped students?
So the, the only transportation being provided right now outside of students with disabilities is for Washington students whose school is being rebuilt.
I'll ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
I'm going to vote aye here, because at this point, we are closing the school.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes five zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is eighteen point three, approval of recognizing Richard D. Browning as an early college high school. This is an action item, so we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could somebody tell us why?
Yeah. So just specifically, the third paragraph on content, I think, is a good summary, that Browning meets the California Education Code description of an early college high school, but we have been notified by the state that it needs to be included in their official name. And so by designating that in their name, they qualify for things, including reduction of instructional minutes, because they're getting their instructional minutes through an alternate program, which is dual enrollment.
Yeah, and I think the enhancement to the school's name will appropriately reflect the opportunity for our Browning students to earn college credits and even a college degree in addition to their high school diploma. Any further discussion?
A wise man once said, "A rose by any other name still smells just as sweet."
I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes five zero.
Thank you. Next, we have item eighteen point four, approval of extension of employment agreement for chief, for our Chief Technology Officer.
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. Craighead, I, I need to read a statement before the, before the vote.
Great.
Thank you. Prior to the board's consideration of the recommended approval for the amendment to the employment agreement for the Chief Technology Officer, SB fourteen thirty-six requires orally introducing actions on items impacting the annual compensation of executive staff. This agenda item approves amending the employment agreement with the Chief Technology Officer to extend the contract by two years for a new term from November sixth, twenty twenty-four, to November fifth, twenty twenty-seven. In addition to other non-substantive modifications, the amendment places the Chief Technology Officer on the salary range sixty-six, step D of the Classified Salary Schedule for Confidential Supervisory and Management, including any amendments thereto authorized by the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Jerome.
Yeah, I was thinking. I thought he was jacked.
Well, I will just counter that by saying one of the additions that Mr. Kalanick has, has incorporated into technology is for our, our youngest students, when, when they open their Chromebook and check in, they have a little ID card with a a QR code, thank you, a QR code, so that they just put the card and use that to, to sign in and, and do their work. And that's a direct result of visiting classrooms and seeing a need for our youngest, you know, little ones to, to have quick access to their Chromebooks. So thank you for that. And it's for that and many, many other reasons that we are considering this. So, without further, oh, you, yes?
I make another observation of that is, you know, today, we are celebrating the extension of our meetings to Avalon, which is a big deal. I can remember within weeks of Jerome arriving here, I said, gee, I'm getting a lot of pressure from politicians about internet access at Avalon, and I don't know what to do, and I talked to some of them, and they said, no, we're working on a twenty-six million dollar project to do a cable under the ocean over there, and it wasn't right at that moment, but he said, well, you know, we can do some things, let me see what we can do, and we already know tonight, one of the things we can do, because we now have access here to this group, to the people at Avalon, so, thank you.
Okay, so I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And Member Miller?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes five zero.
Thank you. Item eighteen point five, approval of employment agreement for Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Operations.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to congratulate Mr. Miranda.
If we vote yes, Mr. Miranda.
Ms. Craig, Ms. Craighead, I have another statement to read.
And I actually have a concern about this, because it means that Alan Rising is going to retire, and that's a sad thing for our district.
But luckily, we have Mr. Miranda, who's willing to step in, and he's learned from one of the best, so we're very fortunate to have both of them in our midst.
I just have to read another statement, thanks.
Ms. Takahashi.
Prior to the board's consideration of the recommended approval for the employment agreement for the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Operations, SB fourteen thirty-six requires orally introducing actions on items impacting the annual compensation of executive staff. This agenda item approves the employment agreement with the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Operations for a two-year term, starting on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, through December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. The Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Operations will be placed on salary range sixty-four, step C of the Classified Salary Schedule for Confidential Supervisory and Management, including any amendments thereto authorized by the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo Mr. Otto's sentiments, since we're thanking Alan here. Just recognize all the work that you've done with and for our district, and Mr. Miranda, you're a fantastic duo over here, so congratulations, Mr. Rising, for all the work that you've done for our district.
Okay, without further discussion, we will have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And Member Miller?
Aye.
That passes five zero.
Thank you. Now we are at report of board members, so we will start with Alana.
There's a couple of things I have to report on tonight. First, I'll start with, on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, I attended the High School Choice Fair. I was there for Soto a little bit, but then I went around talking to the students and mainly the high school students, because the middle school students were busy doing their thing, checking out all the high schools. But I was also able to talk to them as well. So this is our, it's an annual thing where we have all the high schools, they, they, this year it was hosted at Cabrillo, and they're there, and they're able to showcase their schools and the different programs and opportunities that they have for the middle school students in preparation for school of choice, for them selecting their, their high school. The event went really well, there was a lot of students there, which I was really glad to see, because it just showed how excited and how ready our middle school students are for their, their next couple of years. And it's really, it's a really important thing and great thing by the district, because it's really helpful for those students to make that decision, because it's kind of a, it's a big decision. It can set them up for their next couple of years. I know when I was selecting a high school, I was COVID, so I didn't get this opportunity, but this was my first year attending, so it was really great to see all that's offered for those, for those middle school students. And in talking with the high school students as well there, it's just so apparent that there's just so much abundance and opportunity and diversity in this district, and it's, it's a really beautiful thing, and I've, I talked to multiple students who are just grateful for the pathways and that they've said how much it's allowed them to just be themselves and allow them to flourish and just embrace all parts of themselves, and so it was really great to see, and really great for our schools and for our district. There were some concerns that were brought up by a couple of students that I have brought to the attention of district staff, and will be addressed. And also, I think a couple of weeks ago, most of the ASPs, the student councils in the district attended a training hosted by, I believe it was called Involve. So it was a day where a lot, the student councils, they all came, and they received training on how we can better include not just some students, but all the students in our schools, to make it a more inclusive and, and fun environment, and to just improve, improve the quality of what we're giving back to our students. And then, as one last thing, I would like to read the acknowledgement of Indigenous Peoples. I'll bring that up for one second. "In alignment with their diverse worldviews, Native peoples have adapted with the changing landscapes of our nation since time immemorial. Through struggles and triumphs from the earliest points of colonization through our modern time, Native Americans and Alaskan natives have continuously endeavored to be of service to their communities, protect their lands and life-giving waters, and maintain the traditional ways of life that have been passed down from one generation to the next. We acknowledge that we are on land that has been inhabited, sustained, and cared for by the Tongva and Ahachiman nations since time immemorial. Furthermore, we appreciate that their cultures, traditions, and languages continue to thrive here, along with their resistance. It is with us, it is with this understanding that the Long Beach Unified School District endeavors to provide educational experiences that reflect the histories, joys, and resilience of Indigenous peoples, along with their marginalized groups. Fully grasping our nation's history can only occur with an awareness of Native peoples' experiences, not only as historic groups, but also as enduring societies who actively engage with and contribute to the American social fabric today." Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. Mr. Miller?
Well, first off, I just wanted to thank you all again for your calls and concerns. I know after I called out sick a couple of weeks ago, people were wondering where the heck I was, and so I'm doing a lot better now, and I just appreciate all the I appreciate the calls and well wishes, as I'm feeling a lot better, so thanks. In regards to my board report, I will be brief here. First, I just wanted to thank the parents and teachers over at Alvarado for a great trunk-or-treat. A couple of weeks ago, I was in attendance with my entire family. Even little EJ got dressed up for his first Halloween. He was a pumpkin, I will tell you this, he is the heaviest pumpkin I've ever held, that's for sure. He is getting big over there, but all things considered, it was a great event, and I just wanted to thank them again for the awesome event that they hosted for, I think they had a little bit shorter than three hundred and fifty guests on that day, so it was a fantastic event. I know that there are two really big events coming up. There, there's obviously a litany of things on the calendar, but there are two that really piqued my interest. First is the Friendsgiving on November thirteenth for San Kofa Parent Village, that's going to be happening at Houghton Park. It gets a little tricky on that day, because there's also another awesome event, well, there's two other awesome events happening on their day. There's the CAC meeting, that's also happening on November thirteenth. And then there's also the CIC PACE Info Night that is happening on that day. So I am going to encourage those parents who are a part of our San Kofa Parent Village, want to support our students with disabilities, and have an eighth grader who's interested in going to Poly or Pace, make sure you put enough fuel in your car for that day, as I think that those are three really important events to attend. That'll be the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
Thank you. Mr. Itzen, which, which camera's on me, right or left? Thank you. I appreciate our student president from Cabrillo, what he shared earlier with us. But I was also very touched by the parent that spoke around the concern for student safety in general, but in particular, our black students. So I, I, I want to just share some comments with our, with all of our students, all of our community, all of our families. We had some important stuff happen last night as part of our democracy here in our country. And I want to speak candidly, particularly to our emerging bilinguals, particularly to our foster students, particularly to our students in poverty, particularly to our LGBTQ plus students, our immigrants, our students that may feel alone, or scared, or unsure, our students with disabilities, our students that are trying to figure out what's going on. what's going on, um, with our democracy. And our democracy is super important, important and pivotal to the work that we do here. But I, I, I want to express, I, I, I hope my colleagues are okay with me speaking on behalf of our board today, that our district is here for you. Uh, this team here, the team at your schools, uh, please, please rest assured that we are here for you, we're here to support you, uh, we are here to ensure your personal and educational success. And we're committed to continuing to provide that support, uh, that sense of safety that the parent so eloquently expressed, uh, in public comment today. So I think this is an opportunity for our district, all of our district staff, I'm calling us in, please share, uh, these sentiments on behalf of our district, that our commitment to our student's safety, well-being, success is... What's the word I'm looking for? You, you should, it, it will never be questioned, it will constantly remain foundational, unwavering. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Mr. Itzen, please take this clip and share it in whatever way you feel, uh, can get to as many of our students' and families as possible. We are here for you. We'll always be here for you. You need someone to talk to, please find a staff member, an adult, uh, reach out to us, uh, please. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Otto.
And with, uh, Mr. Benitez, uh, on that. And, uh, I think that everybody in this district needs to know what a big family we are and how we stand up for one another and support our students, our staff. We have over sixty-three thousand students, and it's a lot, but, uh, but we are the district we are because of the things we do, including that. So I appreciate your remarks. So, um, I, uh, um, am continuing my efforts to visit with all the PTA presidents in my area. I've gotten half a dozen of them or so now. One, we've had to reschedule. I have, one of the epiphanies of this is that these PTA presidents are really busy. You know, they're doing stuff that, uh, it's hard to get in touch with them and, and hard to get times to, to meet with them. But, uh, but we're getting through and, uh, it's, uh, everyone is, uh, uh, is like a revelation. They're, they're different and, uh, very committed to the schools that they serve. And, uh, it's just humbling to see what they're willing to do. And, uh, I, I met, uh, last week with the Rogers PTA president, and, uh, I expected, well, the first thing I expected was when I met her to, uh, to find out what she was interested in. And when I met her, it wasn't her, it was a guy. It was a, there was a man that was the president of the Poly, I mean, of the Rogers PTA. And we had a, a, a great meeting, uh, talked about his background and what he was doing and Rogers and the things that he was, uh, suggesting. And it was just, uh, just great. I was at the school of choice meeting at, uh, at Cabrillo, uh, and I was so impressed with the work that had gone into that event and, uh, how not the teachers or the people on staff, but the students were telling me what they were doing and selling it to, uh, to the people who were there trying to make choices, uh, about where it was that they wanted to go. I'm, I'm sure this isn't unique, uh, in California, but it sure felt special. And it sure felt like so welcoming for, uh, kids trying to make decisions about their future. And, uh, it was an incredible success. I, 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 uh, left there and went out to the Tal picnic that they do every, at this time of year. And, uh, it was a good turnout, and, uh, everybody was excited about the beginning of school. And, uh, I'm looking forward to a, a, a great school year. That's my report.
So I want to begin by, um, thanking everyone who helped me last, uh, last meeting. I wasn't feeling well. I did have to step out. And so I just want to publicly thank those who came over to see how I was doing. I really appreciate that. So I attended the Jordan PTA, uh, meeting, and I just want to extend my gratitude to Claudianario and Sheena Dennis, who invited me. I really enjoyed the opportunity of getting to meet and connect with parents, uh, who were present there. Um, I also had the, the pleasure of visiting Hamilton, Hamilton Middle School with Dr. Baker. And I just want to thank the principal, the assistant principal, and the intervention coordinator, who took time off their busy schedules, uh, to give us a tour and share with us the programs that they have to offer, um, including ESL classes for parents. We, we visited the library, there was quite a bit of parents there, pretty, pretty impressive. And we also had the opportunity to see the collaboration between Hamilton and Jordan High School. Uh, we had, well, they had, uh, students from the Jordan Mariachi Band and Latino, um, Latino dance group performing at the campus. So it was really nice to see that collaboration. Um, and then finally, I attended one of Poly's fundraisers. And this fundraiser consisted of students, uh, running laps around the track to raise funds for a nonprofit. And, um, not a whole lot of students, but one that really stood out was running for over two and a half hours. And, um, and that was super impressive, but I think what was more impressive is that the students is not either, is not in the cross-country team or track and probably should join it. So if you're out there, student, I think you did an amazing job. And, um, and yeah, it was, it was really nice being there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start by, uh, reporting on a harvest festival that was held at Twain. It was, um, a harvest festival, trunk or treat activities. Families participated by decorating their vehicles and not just handing out candy, but providing games and activities for the kids. So it was a wonderful family event. And also, um, at McBride, there was a trunk or treat. It looked a little bit different because that's the high school level. So, oh, that event was sponsored by the, um, CJI Booster Club, Criminal Justice Investigation Pathway Booster Club. And, um, when I first walked up, the first vehicle I saw for the trunk or treat was a hearse, an actual hearse. So I think if any, um, if any school should have a hearse as part of their fun activities, it should be a school with a criminal justice investigation, uh, pathway. Anyhow, um, oh, and I'll, I'll just mention quickly that the woman who owned the hearse purchased it from Kris Kringle, okay? There's a whole story there. Um, and they had a costume contest, raffle, fun activities. I didn't win the raffle, but, um, that's okay. And then also, I'd like to thank the, um, the new, our new Riley principal, um, for hosting me for a visit. And the Riley PTA, they, uh, provided some swag for me so that the next time I visit, um, Riley, I can be decked out in a Riley T-shirt and everything. Dr. Benitez, I just want to address your comments. And I want to thank you, and I want to say, at least from my perspective, you absolutely speak for this group. You absolutely speak for this board when you say that we are here for our students today, tomorrow, and, and the future. Because that is our responsibility. And if it takes every opportunity, every meeting to reiterate, reiterate that message that we are here for our students and families, whatever it takes, so that our students feel secure, that when they're at our schools, they are safe. Our schools are safe havens, they always have been. We've been down this road before, and, and that was an issue that we had to deal with. And we met that issue head-on, head-on. And we let our families know, when kids are at schools, they are safe and they are protected as well as being educated and cared for. So thank you for saying that. It's a shame that it needs to be said, but it does. And I feel like that's a message that we need to hold strong to because people need to hear that, um, right now. Dr. Baker?
So I too want to use my time tonight to reaffirm our commitment to students, families, and our community. And so I just have a few things I want to say. Um, our guiding principles remain clear and unwavering. Our students are at the heart of everything we do. We built a strategic plan, creating a better future that is, that aims to support every student's growth, foster their learning, and empower them to succeed in school and beyond. And we specifically stand with students who have been the furthest from justice in our system because that, we know that when we lead for them and serve them, we improve education for everyone in our system. This district stands for excellence and equity, and this board stands for Vision 2035, which is an aspiration that we will continue to drive towards. It's a community vision that is grounded in care and mutual respect. With these guiding values and aspirations, we are confident that our schools are safe places where students can be authentic, be cared for, and thrive. And so I just want to speak to our community to thank them for their partnership with us and to reaffirm the commitment to fostering an environment of support, encouragement, and high expectations for our students. We will continue to do that each and every day for those who are in our district. That is my report.
Thank you. So, uh, before we adjourn, I, I would just like to thank our staff, um, for all their work in making it possible for our Catalina community to be included in such a meaningful, um, way to, um, access our meetings and to participate in our meetings in real time. So thank you for, um, making that possible. So unless there's, uh, any opposition to me adjourning this meeting, we will adjourn. And our next regular meeting is Wednesday, November twentieth, so we will see you then. Thank you for joining us this evening. Good night, everyone.